We're going to call the meeting to order. Thank you for coming today, everyone. We will start in our usual manner with a prayer led by Mike Barth, followed by Pledge of Allegiance, and then roll call.
Please bow heads. Praise the seventy Father, we thank you for this day, and we thank you, and we ask you to watch over this council, watch over this community, watch over all the residents, all of our staff here at the city, and just guide us and direct us each and every day that we make the best decisions and work hard to make this a better place to live. We ask you to watch over our military, and just bless them and guide them each and every day. Please guide our decision-making, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mike. Roll call, please.
Baker?
Here.
Marth?
Here.
Bassett?
Here.
Beverly?
Yes, ma'am.
Ridgeway?
Present.
And Jones will be absent.
Cheryl, do you want to motion to amend the agenda? Are you okay? You want to motion?
Yep.
I'm going to motion the agenda.
Do you want to amend the agenda?
I'll.
You have a second? Roll call, please.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Beverly?
And that is to add this?
Yes.
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Marth?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes. Okay, we will go on. You have the May 6 regular council meeting minutes in your packet. And are there any additions or corrections?
I had a question. I thought it was on last, I forgot to look, but I thought it was on the last bill for the basketball goal repairs. $4.99.
It's in the minutes there.
Yeah, minutes first.
Oh.
I move we approve the minutes.
I'll second it. Now you're on, Eric.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
I'm trying.
Baker?
Turn me over to that guy.
Marth?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, we are on to the bills. Questions?
Yes. Basketball goal repairs, I thought it was on last.
It was like $125 before mine.
It was supposed to be $500 last time. We asked about it, they said the whole backboard, everything had to be.
Yeah, those were the replacements.
I think this.
Was it more than one, because it's second?
Is that the?
Because no one was here from the park last time.
Yeah, it's the yellow rubber.
The Gopher Sports?
Yeah.
We had one last time, are they replacing all of them, or?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I think we went with more heavier duty, and then reading forested rooms and everything.
Yeah, the other ones were broken anyway. Couldn't hang nets on them.
I couldn't dunk it in them.
I was in seventh grade.
If nobody has any more questions on the billings, I move we approve.
I second.
Roll call, please.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Marth?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes. Okay, we'll go on to boards and commissions. First, you have in your packet the beautification committee minutes from the May 6 meeting in the packet. I would just like to point out that the farmer's market begins June 4. That'll be coming right up, that's a Tuesday. The hours are going to be 1 to 5, and Fridays 4 to 6, at the corner of Smith and Main, where it was last year. And then, something to think about for fall, there's going to be a scarecrow contest. We're inviting everyone in the community to build scarecrows, including the chamber members and stuff, to put around town that will be on display during Oktoberfest, so you can start planning your scarecrow for that. And just a side note, Lisa Laker is donating a portion of her profits in May to the beautification committee, so if you go to that hardware down there at the old girl building, spend some money there, she'll donate some of her profits to the beautification committee. And then we'll go on to the revolving loan committee, May 7. The committee agreed to offer a loan of $150,000 for seven years at 3.5% interest to Flood Containment, what's their new name?
They don't have a new name yet.
Oh, okay. They're going to be manufacturing flood containment panels. So really, there's got to be a contract.
They'll need the name, they'll need the name for the legislation.
We'll look it up and everything, and so, anyway. And then we have Hick City Board Meeting from May 11. You want to comment on it or anything, Mike?
Again, we had another board meeting, depending on different things within the community. I know we're still working with SMTA, hopefully we can get them online with our channel and her system and everything. The bills continually working on new ideas to videotape. We do still need volunteer, if anybody's interested, it's a volunteer job, but you've got to get in some sporting events, some of the other activities in town, help videotape, so it could also be of help in that regard, so. Also working at upgrading the system into HD capacity. MediaCom and part of SMTA is all part of that kind of process.
Going on to the May 15 Park Board Minutes that are in your packet. Val can give some highlights when she gets up to the podium and gives her report. I assume that works for you. Just to let everybody know, your cleanup day, and when your tentative opening day of the pool is and stuff. All right. Does anybody have questions about what's in the park board minutes?
I do. Own electric, estimate for little league lights replaced is $1,390, but may cost up to $5,000. What was the sense in estimate?
Quite a difference, too.
That's quite an estimate.
If they needed malice, they won't know until they're up there. It would be $319 for each ball. If they need a new valve.
Holy bejimony.
And why aren't they looking into LED lights?
Yeah, why are they using ballast lights anymore? We should replace them as they go bad.
I don't know, I mean, I just, we had 11, 12 lights out.
And did the city, and I don't know if we can, did the city work with AEP to replace some of our lighting, could that also be done?
Downtown.
Downtown? Does that say?
I think AEP's still got a program out there.
And I had mentioned that after our meeting and everything, I remember doing that with the city years ago, and if that's something we can look into with replacement, it'd be a way to go and save some money.
I can give you contact information for a company that I use out at the school for a lot of our projects, and they do all the paperwork, and through AEP, and they give you your incentive money back, or if you want the money back, they take it off the total bill, but they can change everything over and do the work, turnkey solution through all the LED.
That would save immensely on power bills and everything.
Yeah, I mean, figure like, we had at the school, 400-watt light fixtures are now 131-watt light fixtures, I mean, there's a third.
And it's brighter.
Oh, yeah.
You got from 400 lights to 131.
400 watts to 131 watts.
Oh.
Yeah. I can give you some information.
Okay. Good suggestion.
So are you, will you be getting them stopped?
Well, I can, and I mean, it's the park board, we went to, they were just going to get a replacement. I already talked to the guy and told him that we want it.
Do we, do we want that? I mean, I, when I was in business, I had a lot of people talk to me and say, "Yeah, we're going to do it," and then when I'd pull in, and then they'd go, "Ah, change my mind." But I think, especially if Eric can get you hooked up with free stuff, and relight that entire park free.
It'll be free. It'll be free. But my payback period will be a lot less.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But he's even thinking about the basketball courts.
Yeah, I've seen that right below that, $78,000.
That's possible, $70,000.
Well, I can tell him.
Well, I don't, I'm the only one that's saying.
No, I think, I said the last meeting, but nobody was here, I said, "You guys need to look about going LED lights," I mean. So could Mike stop that? You don't have to lift or anything to take it up there.
That's pretty hard.
Yeah, if we could, if we could stop, stop that deal, and give you and Eric time to get information exchanged, and some chit-chat with Kent, how we throw you in the mix, because we like you.
But there's no hurry to get these replaced yet, is there?
Well, the little league thinks there is.
Sure.
Of course there is.
But they're paying for, for the lights.
Yeah.
For the use of them.
Let me call my guy tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay. But try to slow it, stop, whatever.
Maybe you can talk to him, go into LED systems instead, I'm sure.
I know people are going to order.
Okay, because they still need to hire a contractor.
No, no.
And I would think, I wouldn't probably know about that, too. I don't, I don't care. They would probably be familiar with the LED.
That's a pretty good-sized company, I mean.
Okay. Well, we are going on to the council committee reports. Are there any committees of council that have reports to give? Yes, sir. Mr. Beverly.
The water sewer committee was supposed to take testing, or continuing ad or something, to get certified to be a division.
Aw, look at you.
Look at me here, look at you.
I'm the first one to do it.
Star pupil. So I'm in. How did I score? 100%.
I said star pupil.
Did you learn anything?
Yes, I did. Yes, I did. And I did all that, and there are videos that it shows, through the course of this thing. I had no sound and no videos, but I still passed.
Oh.
Cheryl, get this.
I went to school, wasn't it?
Huh?
I didn't believe we were in high school.
I think that's got to run under the department, had to, when the EPA checks on it.
Good job.
Jesse has been, we had talked with the EPA, but Jesse said with the continuing ad for the committee, she's sending us some updates and these webinars that we can go to, and/or we can actually do some live meetings, too, but she's.
And if you go to RCAP on, on the computer, it gives you the exact same listing.
Right.
And webinars and classes.
Then no?
No. Any other committees that want to give reports tonight?
Oh, yes, police fire and rescue, we had a meeting just before this meeting. We met with Police Chief Denning, and he gave us an update with what's going on with the city, and he was officially off probation, and I'd recommend that we take him off probation.
Well, we think that Chief Denning's been doing a very good job for the village of Hicksville. We kind of talked over his evaluation with them at the committee meeting, and I would recommend that we take Chief Denning off, his six-month probationary period.
I would support the mayor's recommendation.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Baker?
Yes.
Marth?
Yes.
No.
Yes, I'm not crying.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
That really had her choked up, Marth.
No, that he's off probation, he's free to arrest her.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Okay, if there are no other committee reports of council, we will go on to the administrator's report.
I'll get through it if I don't freeze here. But anyway, I'll read through it again, though, people can't claim they don't know what's going on. As far as tomorrow's meeting in Archibald, depends on, I won't go into the details, depends on if somebody shows up in town, I need to be around for that. If not, if I can't go April, we'll go. The meeting next Tuesday in Defiance for CDBG, I've got to go to no matter what. Reminder, public hydrant flushing is this week. There should have been notice in the Tribune, there have been notices posted different spots around town. They'll start Wednesday night into Thursday morning, and then Thursday night into Friday Water Street people had a free training class today, it took about hour and a half or so. Guy came to go over hydrants and whatnot, so they got some free contact hours out of that. Mosquito machine goes to Toledo tomorrow for its annual inspection. Not sure when we'll actually start spraying, it's going to depend on, when temperatures stay above 50 degrees consistently. Next one, some of the work coming up, Brian Excavating.
Oh, that's why.
That was one of the leaks that we had found there at Rock and High, so we talked to them about coming in and doing it. Could be rather extensive. Planning to wait for schools out for that, although they will be doing the saw cutting next week. We're going to provide the traffic control. Might need some PD help that day.
Are you digging over on High Street against the curb where that tee and everything is, or are you going to be up on Rock?
We're starting, call it, on the eastbound lane, and we'll probably go all the way over to Rock, because we're not really sure what we're going to find. We got an idea, but we're not sure.
I stood there that night, and they blew the end of it off, and I got to watch it all, I know where it's laying.
Well, we had to dig there before, when we had a problem with the Verizon manhole, but it's not the main leaking, there's something else, it's not the valves leaking, so it's sort of a exploratory, we got a rough idea based on what Aqua line pinpointed. And while we got it open, we're going to run a stub to Rock Street, so if we ever replace Rock Street, it's good to go without tearing it up again. So if people see us digging there, we're seedling by digging there, just take a different route. Then that brings us to the East Smith Street, that 100 block. We've had a couple breaks there in the past couple months. And suffice to say, while Brian Excavating's in town, we're going to have them do an exploratory dig on both ends. If you want me to go into all the details, I will, if not, you probably know enough. Not adding anything?
Just quickly, why?
There's a four-inch line and a six-inch.
Okay, good enough.
The four-inch breaking.
Yep.
And there's some issue.
Gotcha.
We need to find out what's going on there.
Yep.
The VAC truck's been out quite a bit, people have been noticing that, we try to give them a heads-up. Been cutting a lot of ruts, doing a lot of jetting, and some camera work. And as we say, there's a section on Hicks where I need to dig up and replace. Been doing a lot of manholes, catch basin work, and was just out checking another sink hole today, so we got one more catch basin on Antwerp Drive we've got to dig up and fix.
Are you happy with the back truck being new, with all the whistles and bells on it? Is it working?
I know it's working fine. No, it's tomorrow that'll say something broke.
Yeah.
It's been, it's been out a lot. And there, just, just an update on street department and stuff. Been doing a lot of yard work, there's still some to go. Probably a lot of stump grindings to pick up, and we want to get into painting for the end, that's going to take a while. But they've also been tied up on a lot of odd jobs for some other departments, so they're not just doing street stuff. And I said, if anybody wants to see this stuff they get done every week, let me know, I can give them a sheet. The next headache coming along, and here, getting the public, once they see it, they ought to know, take a different route. But Mew Saragon's going to be getting repaved, hopefully starting next week after the holiday. It's going to be from North Main up through the intersection of Elm Street.
Will that be ground?
Yeah, it's getting milled down and repaired where it needs to be, and.
And they're going to bring the lids up?
Bring the manhole.
Okay.
They're supposed to. This will finish our CDBG project from last year. Now, since Indiana Department of Transportation's got that detour, we got trucks all over the place, so it's going to be tough for them to try to get this done. I think they're going to try to keep traffic as much as they can, but for cars especially, you might have to drive an extra quarter mile out of the way, but you might just want to take a different route for about a week, if you can.
Use industrial drive.
Yeah, lovely people that come any time of day.
I mean, all the work that Parker and all the other factors.
Yeah, I mean, once they see it starting, I would make different plans, but that's just me. Some people don't think that way.
It's going to take more than one day.
Well, yeah, it'll take a good week.
So just plan a different route for the whole week.
Yeah, I would. And Pokemire was in last week to give us an update on the study they're doing for the two lift stations, as far as a long-term control plan, so they're sending that information. They will be sending it as soon as they get the report finalized, up to Andy Gaul, to get his blessing. There again, well, there's two options, to get flow from there to a box sewer versus running all the way to the plant with a forced main. The meters they've had installed, they've gotten a lot of good readings, since we've had all this rain in the past few weeks. As far as other projects that are in the design stage, nothing's changed since last meeting. The two lift stations involved in this study, they're sort of sidebars to the Phase 2 part. Defiance Avenue's falling apart anyway, which we've known. So once we get the okay from the EPA on how we're getting the flow from there to that box, or to wherever, I think we should look at getting Defiance Avenue on the design, design stage, and then trying to get it rehabbed next year. They have been pulling those pumps constantly. We're still having people flush rags. And I've got in here, I did not politely put it, but if it's not number one or number two, don't flush it. Now, I could use a lot of other words, but I won't. I don't understand some people, why they keep flushing things, but it's, they had a, plus there's some electrical issues and some other things, so I think that needs done in 2020 versus wait until, I think its deadline was 2025 with Phase 2. And then Ogen Street, I said there's nothing really neat done on that as far as a forced main. It just needs some electrical upgrades, but we'll see what the EPA comes back with. And then Asset Management, GIS. I guess ask Roberta again today, what's, and she's not heard from people associated with this for a while, because Jesse's got the June 19 deadline to give him some specific dates, and I'm not so sure they're going to have stuff to give her. So I told her to forward that message to the lady in charge, tell us what's going on, because you got to, we're waiting on them. So they're supposed to be in town tomorrow and Wednesday, catching up on some things, but whether they get done or not.
But that's not the lady that's working on our project specifically.
Mm-mm. And Roberta said she can't do that report that Jesse's waiting on, until they get all the GIS stuff, which I don't quite understand that either, but it's going to spend kind of frustrating on that. They've got till 2020 to get it done by their contractor, but I think they knew this asset management stuff was, we were expecting that long before 2020.
And they, they knew our EPA deadlines when we started the project.
Yeah.
Information had to be turned in, so.
So I'm hoping they can get her something that she can stick in that letter that's due, where they wanted specific.
The sad thing is, we're almost halfway through this year already.
Oh, yeah. I thought everything was supposed to be done.
1020's not that far away.
I think until June of 2020, RCAP does their contract.
Roberta said she'd get an answer, or talking to.
She was going to try to find out, but.
Get back to you.
I've put in several messages, and.
No response.
Don't really get anything back. So anyhow, that's it, unless you want to quiz me on something else.
I do. Well, it's not you, but the grass clippings, I know we talked about this before, and you still see a bunch of it out there. We never did come up with.
No, we talked about it this little minute ago, before meeting. Forest Committee probably needs to get the dates set, and talk about.
I think we, we did this last year, and there was no, going to be no enforcement behind it, so we didn't, wasn't going to waste the time, was that not right, Troy?
That's my recollection.
Yes.
We changed something in the statute about the height and the.
Height frame.
Just height of grass.
And the height frame, or something.
We were going to put in there about the grass clippings, but it wasn't get, there was.
Enforced?
Yes. It was a lot like parking uptown, and parking across the sidewalk, and several other things that are not getting enforced, and that's, so that's why we didn't put it in there.
Well, like, Kent sent that picture of them putting their grass out on the street, that's a little ridiculous.
That's, yeah, that was across from my house.
Yeah.
That happens all the time.
I can shovel it back to your yard.
So we can do it.
I've got a.
Try it, but it has to be enforced.
I've got a thing here.
And I don't know if you guys have time to stop it and do all that.
What, what is it you want, folks?
Let me read what this town did. I thought it was trying to regulate.
Right.
How you, how a person mows your yard, I mean, you know, how, how much government does a person need? But as you ride around town, and where they intentionally, I mean, they'll go in circles so they can blow everything, not just a couple passes, that's bull.
Drag down Edgerton Street.
So, the Sebring Police Department, located in Mahoning County, is reminding Ohioans to make sure that their loose lawn clippings stay in their yard and not in the roadway. Police say that grass debris can cause hazards to traffic and congest storm drains, which could lead to flooding. There is not a state-level law, but placing grass on poor leaves in the street is actually illegal in some communities, including Sebring. According to the Sebring Police Department, the village law states, A, no person shall rent, move, or otherwise place any leaves, grass, or similar debris upon public street alley, or other public lands, or thoroughfare within the municipal limits. B, each day such, such offense occurs, continues to occur, shall constitute a separate offense. C, whoever violates any provision of this section is guilty of a minor misdemeanor for the first offense, and a misdemeanor of the fourth degree for all succeeding offenses. And after, I got some of those pictures, that some of you people had emailed me and stuff, and I did some riding around town, we got to do something, it's just, so, the street lighting property, want to have a meeting?
Ordinance.
Ordinance?
I got a question, though. Troy, you may answer this. I know, you know, the big thing is not to blow the clippings down as the motorcycles, right? To me, if a motorcycle has an accident, and that is the cause of the accident, to me, I'm not so sure that doesn't fall under putting injurious materials on the roadway.
It could, if you're looking for something, and then there was a cause of an accident, there's, I mean, so could that. But he's doing it for multiple reasons, though, I think he's.
Right.
About the sewer.
Sure.
The sewer issue, the.
But I mean, it's still, well, yeah, I mean, injurious material, that'd be more for traffic.
Traffic, yeah.
They're lucky.
Right. And for general upkeep cleanliness.
So I mean, so there's probably a way.
Yeah, if something happened now, there's probably a potential way to cite somebody, but, then the real question, like everything else, is, okay, so, I, I could tell you, I purposely don't blow mine out when I mow, but of course, necessarily, when you turn around, if some of them might go out there, are those people are going to get cited, or is only like the ones that the pictures show where they're purposely like, or whoever said they're driving around, so they can blow all their leaves and all their grass out into the, so it's not in their yard anymore?
Well, I'm sure that people.
Some of that's discretionary.
Because you see them, you know, they'll blow it all out in the street, and then they'll take the mower, and use it to blow it off the sidewalk, so they know how to blow it, so all they have to do is blow it off the street, back in the yard.
And if you confront some of them, they'll say, "I'm going to get it when I get done."
Yeah.
You know, because I have, I've stopped.
It's never-ending, that grass clipping.
Because that's where, we can't forget what night the guys got caught up at High Water, that Thursday night, whatever night, the guy that consistently mows his grass in the street, then contacted us and was griping.
Because it was flooding.
Because all their grass is on top of catch basin top.
Mm-hmm.
And I felt like saying, you know what? Suck, I mean, that just, that's what gets aggravated.
So we'll turn this over to the ordinance committee.
We'll just set the date and time of meeting before next meeting.
Talk to, if you would, maybe talk to the chief about it, see if it's something they can enforce, you know, I mean, if they're willing to.
Yeah, I don't know how you'd do it, you got to catch them in the act, and again, if you got renters and landlords.
It's not so much catching in the act.
That give way.
You know, horn boys.
If you, yeah, somebody like the junk vehicle, where the owner.
Owner's responsible.
Owner or might implement a bad property would be responsible for it. I think it's the actual wording.
Okay. We will go on, then, to the solicitor's report.
All right, before we get to these, when we're done at the end.
Yeah.
Need a brief executive session to update you on a couple of things. One would be, under the litigation.
Need a brief executive session to update you on a couple of things. One would be, uh, under the litigation and another would be on the acquisition of real estate. So, we can do that at the very end unless somebody wants to do it differently. First thing is ordinance 2019 dash zero three, second reading by caption only, an ordinance authorizing the village fiscal officer to transfer funds and declaring an emergency. That's the emergency part, Cheryl's request based upon timing.
I know we suspend the rules. I'll second that.
Um, I take it that the ordinance will be changed to state that it's an emergency?
She said it, she gave me a copy today, so maybe it didn't make it in all the packets, but...
All right. Roll call?
Baker?
Yes.
Barth?
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Richway?
Yes.
So then, third reading of ordinance 2019 dash zero three by caption only, an ordinance authorizing the village fiscal officer to transfer funds and declaring an emergency.
So move.
Roll call?
Baker?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Richway?
Yeah.
So next is ordinance 2019 dash zero five, first reading by caption only, uh, an ordinance reinstating extending the job creation tax incentive program established by the village of Hicksville, Ohio and declaring an emergency. Back in 2008, we established that job creation incentive program, um, and it was good for five years and then we extended it. And it was just up in the end of March of this year, so Jerry Hayes had asked that we extend it. There's currently actually a project involved locally where they're trying to put incentives together. Not a new employer, but an existing employer, um, increasing jobs. And I know there's some potential competition out there. And so, this Jobs Ohio, he told me today, I spoke to Jerry today, is putting together incentive plan for a local business and they'd like to just have, like always, everything at their availability. Nobody's actually taken advantage of the program, although we will look through the records, there has been one application that was made at one time and then, uh, it was approved actually, and then they must have never followed up on it, the company. And so, it's out there as an option, one of those tools that when we're trying to either attract business or keep local business and, and it's just another tool that allows us to do that.
Although we suspend the rules. Second.
Roll call?
Richway?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yeah.
Bassett?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
So, second, third readings of ordinance 2019 dash zero five by caption only, an ordinance reinstating and extending the job creation tax incentive program established by the village of Hicksville, Ohio and declaring an emergency.
So move. Second.
Roll call?
Baker?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Richway?
Yeah.
Next is ordinance 2019 dash zero six, an ordinance rezoning part of Lot 82 of the auditor's plaid and part of Lot Number 176 Shoe Factory Edition in the village of Hicksville, Ohio and declaring an emergency. And again, the emergency on these always is the statute requires them to be passed within a 30-day period after the meeting, and so we can't do the full three readings on those. This is Mel Bontrager's.
I move and suspend the rules. I'll second.
Roll call?
Baker?
Yes.
Barth?
Carpe diem.
Richway?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Second, third readings of ordinance 2019 dash zero six by caption only, an ordinance rezoning part of Lot 82 auditor's plaid and part of Lot Number 176 Shoe Factory Edition in the village of Hicksville, Ohio and declaring an emergency.
So move. Second.
Roll call?
Baker?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Richway?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
And, uh, third reading by caption only, resolution 2019 dash zero four, a resolution authorizing the mayor of the village of Hicksville to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission's state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs and to execute contracts as required.
So move. Second.
Roll call?
Baker?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Barth?
Beverly?
Yes.
Richway?
Yes.
And then, last is, uh, second reading by caption only, resolution 2019 dash zero five, a resolution of the village of Hicksville, Ohio directing the Defiance County Auditor to assess and enter the delinquent water and sewer bills on the tax duplicate of the properties described in Exhibit A and declaring an emergency. That's another one that Cheryl, uh, because of the timing of it, would like that added in.
Make a motion to suspend the rules.
Roll call?
Baker?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Richway?
Yes.
Third reading, resolution 2019 dash zero five by caption only, a resolution of the village of Hicksville, Ohio directing the Defiance County Auditor to assess and enter the delinquent water and sewer bills on the tax duplicate of the properties described in Exhibit A and declaring an emergency.
Second.
Roll call?
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Richway?
Yeah.
Barth?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
That's all I have with the exception of that, the executive session. We'll talk about those two things.
Kim and the tax office and I and Cheryl get together and discuss some decisions going on.
Yep, yep. She'd sent me an email late last week and I said when I got back to my office, I would schedule something and I didn't have not yet, but yeah.
To do that?
Yep.
So, um, do you want to wait till later on for the executive session? Does it matter?
No, that's fine. Wait till the end.
All right. So then we'll go on to the department head of reports, Police Chief Dunning, if you want to.
Three seconds, please. Uh, one, I just completed my 40 hours of mandated chief's training required by OPADA. That was May 6th to the 10th, and I've got notification today that I passed, so that is taken care of. Uh, second thing is our Marx radios are now all in the cars. The mobiles were put in two weeks ago with the repeaters in the cruisers. Our poor, poor holes were just finished this past Friday with the repeater channels, put in those. Last couple of days, we have been having some issues, but we're trying to figure out what those issues are, so. Uh, other than that, um, I forgot to bring my stats with me, so I don't have my monthly stats from April with me. But, uh, other than that, thank you for taking me off probation. Everything's going good.
I guess it's a good thing you passed your chief's course.
Yeah, you know what? Don't know if you knew what the repercussions were, if you didn't, so, but...
Any questions?
Thank you for all you do.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Bar Chief Kramer.
Tonight, I just handed you the department update. I just go over it quick. Sorry I didn't get to your packet in time. On EMS side, we ordered a new life pack 15, the one that we currently have. We have two. We're only replacing one this year and possibly one next year, year after. They're over 10 years old and we're starting to have trouble with them, so it's time to upgrade them. I'm probably looking at new AEDs to carry in some of the trucks and the police cruisers. I will probably be supplying them through my budget for the police department to carry as well. Uh, we have seven to start in the first responder class. That should be finished up by the end of June. Uh, the cost, once we hear from EMS grant, we will use that to pay for that class. I'm gonna start a fire inspector class starting June 8th. Uh, we have four scheduled for the firefighter one class, starting in June. And there's one that wants to take a firefighter two transition class, and that should all be covered by grant. Other than that, everything's going good. Questions, comments?
How do you foresee using your first responders when they get trained?
Um, they will either be on the schedule or if we're short and they're not on the schedule, we're gonna utilize the I am responding that we use to see who's showing up. And they will run with one EMT on the squad.
Any questions? Thank you. Okay. Val Shaw, would you like to come to the pool room and update everyone on what's happening at the park?
Well, we're gonna clean the pool tomorrow night with the lifeguards and hope to fill it this weekend. And we have the health inspector coming next Tuesday, and if everything passes then, we hopefully will be able to.
The 31st?
Yep, Friday the 31st. Yeah, because the kids are still in school.
The park looks very nice.
It's hard keeping up with all the rain, enough baseball fields.
I don't know who's been doing the baseball fields, but somebody's doing a, an excellent job of taking them from a wet sand pit to a really nice playing field for my grandsons.
Yeah, with the rain, it's kind of iffy sometimes, but...
Yeah.
Thank you.
How are the plans going for day in the park?
Good. I mean, Cory's mostly in charge of that, but I mean, he keeps me updated and everything's going as planned.
I saw a list of people participating in it and it's quite a long list of vendors and activities, so...
Weather permitting, there's no rain date, so we just hope that.
And if I could add something to that real quick, bear in mind to stop you from your discussion with her, but we can talk about beer day at the park, trying to find an entity or a group to supply if we can get that going there at the park. But we've never voted on allowing it to be at the park for that day and just have a, um, throughout, and I talked to Troy about it, it's kind of like a, it's a vote if we were to be willing to do that as a council for June 29th. It would be contained, you know, monitored, and looked over well. I talked, I said something to the chief and I've been talking to Conrad Beck a little bit about what we would need for that. The city itself can apply for a liquor license or a beer permit for that day, but that's why we're looking for maybe a, a 501(c)(3) entity if they would help provide or maybe be a part of it for that day. At this time, I want to ask for a vote if we're going to allow it officially for the day in the park, if that makes sense. We've never done that, so.
And that's because the, the rules in the park are no alcohol permitted, so if somebody likes to suspend that rule for a day or whatever, you know, under those circumstances, not for anybody just to bring in whatever they want, but through the...
What's the hours for the beer time? Does anybody, what's the hour for the...
Eight to eight is the hours of the whole.
The whole day.
Oh, really, so...
And I don't think it's gonna be that.
Little day drinking.
So for that.
No way. Why don't you make the motion and see where it goes, Mike, if that's what you want to propose?
I'd like to make that motion for the day in the park to have, you know, alcohol available or sold.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Are they gonna put a timeframe or anything on it?
And we haven't really got that far because, you know, we were trying to look at who's gonna have the liquor license to permit and liability insurance, um, you know.
He's just talking about suspending the rule that no alcohol's allowed in the park is really, that's the motion he's making.
For that day, right, right.
Will that take care of the open container statute?
If it's within the contained area, I think if you look at the, if you look at the open container statute, it talks about, um, temporary, I think it's been a while since I looked at that, but I think there's some interplay between the temporary permit and, uh, the open container statute.
I mean, you get it all in one.
They go, yeah, I mean, it goes into the, we don't have to suspend it because I think the temporary permit.
It's stated in the temporary...
It's stating in there that it permits it within the parameters of where you're allowing it. Anywhere else, like if you walk outside of the fenced-in area, that's still open container even if it's in the park, yeah.
So, you're not gonna be able to carry your own in?
No, no, no.
Okay. Roll call?
Baker?
No.
Barth?
Yes.
John, oh, Richway?
Yes.
Beverly?
Sure.
Bassett?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else for all?
No, I could, I want to think everybody's working on day in the park. Like I said, we've been asking questions and being a first-time thing that we've done for the city. And at the park, uh, we've got Cory's been working real hard on it, but it's kind of like the park board is doing a lot of the running and asking questions. And I know I talked to Troy, I talked to Kent, and, you know, Scott called him on a couple of things, but everybody in the...
Kent had sent me an email where he wanted further involvement.
Yeah, I know. I wanted to take him off. I, the reason why I was asking so many questions, and I asked Cory to ask questions too, we need input. If somebody sees anything that we're doing wrong or need to cover, anything like that, since this is our first time, we're, you know, we're kind of looking at this and we're gonna take, we're taking notes and making sure everything runs smooth. But we're excited. We have a lot of people participating, uh, which is a great thing. We're, or hopefully it's gonna be a fun day in the park and take care of everything.
What was the email about the insurance?
The insurance is the liability and of course, I've had a couple of phone calls.
There's all types of things that require, that have been proposed that have required insurance, so it gets into two issues. One, the village should add like a, I forget what he labeled it or whatever, but we should have our own special event like coverage and what the cost of that's gonna be. The only way they can figure out the cost of that is to be able to assess the risk, and so they need to know what all the events are. And then, uh, within those events, let's take for example, the bounce houses. Are, are they gonna be rented? Are they gonna be donated? Are the person that's, you know, that's donating them, are they gonna set them up and monitor them? Are our volunteers gonna do it? Are village employees gonna do it? And all those questions determine what the risk that they associate with it is. And as it turns out, to use that as an example, um, the church already has its own insurance policy on the inflatables and they can add the village as an additional insured to that, like no problem, and send it over to Conrad, and then that really would eliminate that from being part of the village's concern. Same with pony rides, same with petting zoos, you know, any of those things.
Something we can't wait till the last minute about.
Yes, that's what I was thinking when I read that.
And some of those vendors will have, some of them probably will, I, the example I gave is like the food vendors. If you're the guy that has the french fry truck that goes to all the local festivals, they probably got all types of insurance because that's their business. And, uh, so they can just provide a copy of a certificate of insurance. But if you're, uh, you know, and I don't know anything about any of it, but if you're the local farmer who's got some animals and you want to bring them up for a petting zoo that you don't normally do, but you just thought, oh, it'd be a nice thing to do and I can bring them up here in my trailer or whatever, probably don't have coverage that covers that. And like Mike said today, you know, the goat bites some little kid or something and there we go.
Little kid biting by.
Yeah. So, that's why, that's why Conrad was asking all those questions, because that's what then, we get everything we can pinned down as much, and obviously the, the beer especially makes it a even bigger issue. And then, that'll limit what cost we might have with adding a special event rider to our insurance policy because we will have spread out the risk among everybody else that's responsible for it, and then we'll only have that other little stuff that, you know, where we might creep in on. So, that's why those questions, answering those questions and getting that documentation is so important for him because that's when he'll be able to advise us what we need and what...
And I guess that's maybe where some of the confusion is right now because we don't know if anybody's getting that done. And that's, as I say, something that needs to be done ahead of time.
You could set a deadline, but they, they either get it done by this date or they will not participate.
I'm working on it. Like I said, in the last, uh, since...
Mike's working on it. He's the one that, yeah, I can say.
Did you ask him about a waiver?
It wouldn't do any good for them to waive, I mean, here's the problem is, we could get somebody that doesn't have insurance to waive like a claim against the village or whatever, but they're not the ones that's gonna have the claim. It's the little kid that got bit by the goat's family. Well, they can't waive his rights, so you know, if he sues somebody, he's suing who's got the deepest pockets.
I got an idea. Let's not let that goat down there.
But that's, that's the problem with waiver. My article on Conrad, Conrad may have more information on asking him if there is something we could have.
But leave the goat at home.
So many people are donating things, I mean, duck tanks and money and, and, you know, buying stuff and tents. I mean, he had questions about that.
No, those are liability tents if it blows down.
Nobody can pay a tent liability.
You know, what if Ron drowns when he's in the duck tank and the line's so long that people throw at him?
Just don't keep it off.
Hold the button down. Don't let him up, don't let him up. But that, I mean, all of those things, you don't think about some of that hidden, you know, and it's...
We are now. We are definitely working on it.
Okay, everybody realizes the importance of someone reporting to my place, being taken care of in advance. Okay. Welcome on to the fiscal officer's report.
Um, you have the fund status, uh, the police April collections. I have the annual letter from American Tower wanting to buy the piece of land that we rent to them. And, uh, we also have the Catholic Church liquor license information. And I also put, um, a copy of the updated... And I also put a copy of the updated, somewhere, personnel manual. Please look at this over. Everything's still in red or crossed out or all the changes are marked in color. And so you can vote on it next time. First meeting in June.
Cheryl, in regards to this American Tower?
Uh-huh.
Have we ever gave them an increase since they've been there?
We have a little.
Yeah, there's a lease that's pretty lengthy. I've never remembered.
Oh, I didn't think it was that long.
I thought it was, but I don't remember.
The Verizon Tower, I don't.
Yeah.
I don't know when the date's up.
Yeah.
It was 6/59, 7/15.
Which is probably just a build-in, increase every so often.
Which is probably still low for what other charges.
Oh, yeah. So we don't even want to consider doing anything, do we?
We did it last year and I, she knows.
Well, I guess I'll go on to my report if no one has any questions for Cheryl. And, um.
Does Rick have any?
Well, we're not at the end of the meeting. I'm just gonna give my report and then we're gonna. So, the summer concert series is coming up on the Hoover side porch like we had last year, um, throughout the summer, every couple of weeks. They're on Thursday night, 7 to 9. Pretty mild crowd, probably most of them were my parents' age, but, I mean, you know, I mean, there were younger people too, but, I was asked to ask council if they would consider allowing open containers during that event. We do not want to sell alcohol, but we would like to be able to have people, be able to bring their own drinks in if they want them. And it was really a pretty mild crowd, families with young children and very mild crowd. Police officers were usually there whether they were to enjoy the music or whether they were there to socialize with the people or just watch the event, I don't know. But I mean, it was a pretty quiet crowd. Good bands, local music. So what do you think of allowing open containers? I talked to the chief about it prior to and I guess it's just something that you would need to give permission to for those hours, 7 to 9 on those nights.
I think you'd still have to restrict where it could be at. I don't think you could just give carte blanche that up there in the vicinity of the concert, you could have open container because you have people walking down the sidewalks, you're gonna.
No, it would not be that.
You'd have to have a fence to.
How's Pete gonna get his Bud Light from his house up there?
No problem.
More like snapple action.
You for example, Pete.
You got a crazy cooler up there with them all closed in it.
Yeah, he carried it in the open as long as they're closed.
No, it would, we have, actually, we have barricades at both ends of the Hoover side, just so people can't drive through there and stuff, but anyway, it's a nice crowd. I can't imagine anybody getting too rowdy, but.
How was the concert last year, was it?
Seven to nine. Thursday night, you know. The first concert's gonna be next Thursday, by the way. On the 30th of May, it's gonna be the wannabes kicking off the summer concerts, so come on up. So do you want to give, if anybody, you know, I would entertain a motion either way.
I'd entertain a motion though. What'd you say about it, chief?
I have no problem with it. I agree with Troy, you gotta limit the area that they can be in. So if you, whatever section you rope off, barricade off, that's where it's gotta be. They've gotta be within those parameters. You know, not trolling up and down the sidewalk, walking.
I'll second.
Roll call?
Baker?
No.
Barth?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Sure.
Ridgeway?
Absolutely.
I'll tell the committee. Thank you. So just.
Too easy.
Yeah. Just going through some events here, you know, there's a lot going on in town. You've got the concert with the wannabe's starting on the 30th. On the 31st, there's Christmas cruise through fundraiser at the Corner Smith and Main. Chicken meals will be served. There was supposed to be an RSVP by the 19th that this flyer says at the front door, so I don't know if you can, the telephone number's out there too, I don't know whose it is. If you wanna, if you wanna order a chicken meal or just chicken on May 31st. The Red Cross is gonna be at the Church of Christ, I believe, this Thursday on the 23rd. On the 4th, the farmer's market starts, Tuesdays 1 to 5, Fridays 4 to 6. On June 4th to the 8th is that Chautauqua event at the Oglesis Village in Defiance during the daytimes and evenings. I guess you should probably go to the website to find out when, who's speaking or reenacting what. But I do know they're gonna be in Hicksville on June 7th and 8th. Let's see, 7th and 8th, yeah, having things here in Hicksville related to that during the daytime. And then June 14th is the Night of Lights, just to update you on what's going on.
Did you say something about the community grad sales?
I meant to say that. Thank you for bringing that up. Community grad sales, I believe, is.
31st, 31st and 1st.
Okay, 31st and the 1st of May. Thank you for bringing that up. Go ahead. I dare you, I dare you. Good, do it. Does anyone do the tails of that?
Yeah, I say only sorts of 10.
That'd be more fun than the other.
The grad sales?
No.
The more they pray.
Oh, I thought you were buying for liquors to tails for the grad sale.
Alumna will be at the American Legion, I imagine, as usual.
Yeah, it starts at 10 a.m.
Okay, and the route will be through town and then on North Main Street to the cemetery?
Yes.
Hopefully a lot of people can make it. I can't, I gotta work. You guys walking in? No, you're not gonna be walking. Okay, so is there anyone in the audience that has anything that they would like to address council about?
Hey, look, Rick brought it for you.
If you do, you may suck some ammonia. State your name.
Can you look at the hammer, would you please?
I have four things. The biggest thing is notice that our contractors will be back this week, next week, and following that, doing post-construction repairs to all the yards that still need it.
Alright.
Because usually we let those yards sit over the winter and they'll, you know, heave up or down. You'll see what damage they need to repair. So they will be here for the next three weeks. So you'll see them around town. Please be patient. Second, the day in the park. I believe with asking the high school very nicely, I believe the SMTA would like to provide the wifi for the day in the park off of the grandstand connection. So can you facilitate that?
Yeah, I'll talk to them.
Okay. Third thing is the, we gotta notice about our sidewalk in front of the office. I'd like to have a waiver for a year. I'm going to redo our parking lot next year. I'm ripping it all out and redoing the whole thing. So if we can get a waiver for sidewalks having cracks in it.
Did you notice, give you a deadline?
Yes, it's this July.
Oh, okay.
And the fourth thing is the lot that is between my building and Paul Yoder's house. Paul and I have been sharing, mowing that back and forth. We had a discussion a couple of weeks ago and we'd like to make a determination on what the village is actually going to do with that lot that's setting dormant that is in Goldnet's estate. Except for 1958.
I, I don't.
I don't think it's, it's not the village's.
It's got back taxes that's still owed, almost $7,000.
Who owns it?
It's Fred Goldnet's.
Ronald Fred?
So it's in the estate and it's never been sealed. Jerry Klein said it was supposed to be part of our property. I do not want it for the business. I do have other interests in it for something else, but I think Paul would like to possibly take hold of it.
Use the ring.
So, he would get a hold of Goldnet's, I would say.
Well, if there's taxes owed to county treasurer, they'd have to foreclose on it.
Why do you think it's taken so long and nothing has been addressed over all these years?
I don't know. Squeaky wheel sometimes.
It's an undeveloped lot with no possibility of having a city tax on it.
Right, but it's got past due taxes on it. So don't you think that they would like try to collect it, their money or something?
You would think, but I have.
It took them a bit 40 years if the Goldnets owned it.
I have ideas, you know, Paul and I have discussed, I'm buying the house, Paul's house, and, you know, if I could possibly get that lot without having to go through a bunch of hassle, it could be great and I could share it with the business then. So I have dual purpose for it, but not really for the business.
I don't think we have anything to do with it.
It'd be the county, I mean, if there's real estate taxes owed, that'd be the county treasurer, auditor and treasurer.
I'll get a hold of them.
I wouldn't be okay with, I'm not sure of the next step, but to give them a, the year, since they're gonna redo the sidewalks and.
Oh, yeah.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, because we should talk to you to see if we can get you to take all those catch basins out of the sewer, sanitary, and put them in the storm.
Yes. No.
Sheila, would you make that?
I'm not doing the back parking lot. I'm just doing the front. I'm gonna leave the back the way it is. So we could do the catch basin that's in the front.
Well, the two that are in the back are tied together and then they run down to the front.
Yeah, and, and right now, I put in a drain tile to the back northeast corner and put a new catch basin back there for the runoff. And it goes into that, runs from that catch basin to the catch basin in the middle, in the back, which then ties into the middle and the side, or the south side,